All right, it is 5:02 and I'd like to call the order, the meeting, the Wassa School District Board of Education for the election of officers. I will turn the, or the meeting now over to Dr. Hill, who will serve as Secretary pro tem for this portion of the meeting.
Evening, everybody. So I'll just oversee the election of the elected positions. First of all, congratulations to everybody who got elected. Welcome, Mr. Boucher as a new board member. And at this time, we will be electing the board president. I'm sorry, first, we're going to read the leadership choices. And I, right, Cassie?
Yes, but I just realized something. Mr. Boucher's name is not on the pink sheet. So if you could please add him to the blank space at the top, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
I apologize. He's on all the ballots, but not on the pink sheet.
So Cassie is our deputy clerk, so if you would read the leadership choices report?
Yes. For the office of president, Jeff Lee and Tricia Zunker have shown interest. For the role of vice president, Beth Martin and Tricia Zunker. For the role of treasurer, Lance Trollop. For the role of clerk, Jane Roche.
Okay. All right, so we'll go through these one at a time. And so, first of all, as Cassie just read, we have two current board members interested in office of the president, Jeff Lee and Tricia Zunker. Are there any nominations from the floor? Seeing none? Okay. Hearing no additional nominations, seek to close nominations.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. So nominations for the office of president are closed. So at this time, I would ask board members to cast their written ballots for the office of president and pass those ballots to me, please. Cassie, do you read them or do I read them?
You look at them. Then you hand them to me and I verify and then you file it.
Thank you. Oops, pardon me. Pardon me while I disappear for a second.
Oh, he's got the...
Dealers should never buy you under the table.
That's the planted one. Let me see here. At least turn these all the same direction. There we go.
There's some things here that's mad.
All right. Thank you. I'm gonna check to make sure there's no votes under there.
Just all the ones, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's one of those double-edged swords.
Split.
Okay. Ah, no, we're, because Beth isn't here.
Right.
So, okay.
So I guess we're voting again?
Yeah, we will have to vote again. So, just so we're clear, so we have four and four, is that you're telling us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's what you got, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Question, Keith?
Yes.
Is there anything regarding why, I mean, are the potential candidates allowed to speak or say anything? I mean...
I think that makes sense.
We're just voting again without any statement.
Right, we've never run for positions. We've never done speeches or anything like that. Doesn't, there's nothing in policy saying we can't, though.
There is a policy specifically on what to do with a tie.
Yeah, what is, that's...
Arm wrestle?
No.
Flip a coin? Pick some scores? I don't know. Let's check the policy.
Remember, we checked it once when another school district did not have something to do with a tie and they had quite a trouble, so we went through that, I don't know how long, but it was.
It says, "In the event of a three-way tie during the election process, board members will be asked to cast a second ballot and to vote for only two candidates. The two nominees received the most votes are placed on the next ballot."
That won't...
That doesn't apply.
If no nominee receives a majority of the votes cast after a maximum number of five ballotings and a tie still persists, the officer will be decided by a drawing of lots between the two nominees. The superintendent of schools will draw the name of one of the two nominees and the name drawn will determine the winning officer.
After how many?
Five.
Five. Seems to be a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so the rules aren't set up for anyone or...
By anyone.
Well, it's like, we might have to address that in the future.
Typically, it's not an issue in a nine-member board. So...
Doesn't that imply that it goes from three, you only vote for two, then you're down to two, and then it kind of implies that after that, if there's still two...
If there's two, you vote five times.
Yeah, so that's...
And then you just draw?
Yeah, then you draw a name.
Right.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're an eight-member board tonight, but we're stuck doing it potentially four more times.
While we're the board, so, you know, we could, I think we should vote again, but if everything stays the same, we could always agree to not, or we could just keep doing it with five times.
I would propose, you know, Tricia, say, maybe we just, you know, let's have a little discussion about it, vote again, and then I guess we could either, you know, decide to, we could vote, I mean, we could draw names then, I mean, I don't know how many times this is going to, to, how much we're going to alter, but I guess we'd find out after a second vote. Is that agreeable?
Yeah, we should at least have another vote and then...
Another vote, given that we know it's close.
A month-long campaign focused only on the president?
Right, right.
Is something in a filibuster now?
It's the issue.
Do anybody care to speak first, or...
Tricia, I'll give you your choice.
Okay, I mean, I'll keep it, I'll keep it very brief.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to address this. It certainly seems to make more sense than randomly selecting a name out of two. Jeff, I respect you very much, and I sort of felt bad throwing my name in the hat, but much like I did last year, the reason is there's a spousal conflict, which I don't think is ideal from the president, where the president's role is to be the responsive voice for the board. And so when we have individuals that reach out to us and they need, and they're requesting a response, and their response is, "I have a conflict, I can't respond," if that is not delegated to somebody, then those individuals are not receiving the response that they're due. So it's the only reason, I mean, so it's nothing personal, I just think for purposes of being able to respond fully to the community and to those that reach out, that was, that was my main reasoning. I mean, I have other reasonings, I mean, I think I've, over the course of the year, I've demonstrated how much work I put into being a school board member, visiting every school, trying to attend as many things as I can, and the work I do with policy revision. Thank you.
Good. Well, I think I'd like to second everything that Tricia said. You know, Tricia has worked exceptionally hard this year, and that's a very good thing. And it'd be good if all of us put as much time in as I, as I think Tricia has. So I think that's all very positive and all to the good. I think it is valuable to have somebody who can speak to all the issues that are in front of us, and I think we have learned, and sometimes through, through a hard knocks, that a person who is conflicted on an issue has to be very careful about how they, they approach discussions with the public, because we have, of course, been called in the carbon for that before. In the end, it comes down to, the reason I'm running is, is I want to carry through on some of the things that we've been working on, developing professional development for the board, developing a new evaluation process for the superintendent, developing regular procedures for the work of the board beyond, I think, what we've had in the past. I think there's a lot that we can still do to, to make those things work out. I'd like to see those things through. But, of course, you know, that doesn't mean those things aren't going to get done if you all vote otherwise. So I'm here to serve, and I will serve to the degree that you all want me to serve. So you'll have that, that promise from me for another year going forward.
Thank you. All right. So hearing those, those comments, that considerations, if you would please cast a second vote and send those to me. I'll get my papers made out.
I've been folding the same. We don't have an excuse for dropping.
Already lost his potential career as a car dealer and can't handle...
Yep, can't handle all the paper stuff.
Thank you, sir.
You're a write-in on this thing.
Nope, there was no nominations from the floor.
Tricia doesn't have to approve of themselves being able to write in.
Okay.
I think my...
Okay.
In your parole?
Yes.
How many is your...
Four. How could you forget?
One.
Hopefully you needed six.
No.
Retiring.
Did you get a good retirement package?
Oh, yeah. Eight dollars and a half.
Eight dollars and forty cents.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Let's look at it again.
So we, I mean, if we're looking at policy, we, you know, we could repeat this as many times as you wish. Is there anything else that people want to present or consider? And maybe, since you two have already kind of spoken, is there any, anything that anyone needs to, wants the board to consider?
We need to draw lots, or we, except, I mean, if we do it five times, we're going to have the same results.
Yep.
Draw lots, or we could, you know, we could delay it, but tonight's the night to do it.
I would not be in favor of delaying it.
You know, but we could delay it if we wanted to, but...
I wouldn't need it.
Tonight's the night we're set to do it.
Right. If that's what the policy says, that's what it says.
Because it affects the vice president, it's not like we can...
Right, yeah, we have to delay everything, then, so we do it in this order.
Then we have to revise this policy.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see what Meola has to say about that, right.
Yeah, I'm not sure what else you would do for a even total split then, other than draw lots, though. What else could you do other than...
You see it happen in regular elections in smaller communities.
Yeah. The only other option that comes to mind would be, you know, we are obviously missing one member, we could move forward with the current structure, and then at our next meeting, if we've got nine, that would be, that would be another option. Or we could just draw.
I think it should be resolved tonight. I think we're agenda opposed tonight.
Well, we can't, yeah, we can't not follow the policy. You know, we, we could agree to make some kind of alteration to, to speed it up instead of going through five ballots, for instance, but we can't ignore what's in the policy.
That's true.
And, you know, so we can't just say, well, we're waiting till, till that gets done.
Okay. So we need two names on a piece of paper, on two pieces of paper?
If I have a minute, I can carry that.
Okay.
Obviously, one happened.
Find a box or something and...
So I think when we look at this policy, can I think we got some more, or boxes of paper, maybe something more exciting.
Something suitable or ask in...
Thank you.
He said it was going to be a family, he didn't expect it.
Never say that.
It's your fault, Lee.
Never say that.
Okay, these pieces of paper are exactly the same size. Everyone can see.
Oh, he's got a basket. Oh, perfect.
Probably not that clear.
There you go. That's...
Story, everybody's want to verify, but he's exactly the same.
No hanging chance.
Well, one has more ink, so it might be a little heavy.
You have to do some math to pick it out, though.
And they're both folded the same.
Put it in here, and just shake it up a little bit. Are they good? Are we ready? All right. I hope I just pick up one.
You gotta do it again.
Tricia.
All right.
Wow.
All right.
You won.
One leadership crisis tovert.
Our meetings are never done.
All right. All right, there we are. So, all right.
Will you run for vice president now?
No.
Yep.
Okay, so I guess, yeah, moving forward then to vice president, obviously, Tricia is no longer in the running for that, so we currently have Beth Martin, who has declared a can, to be a candidate for vice president. Are there other nominations from the floor? Seeing none? Okay.
I nominate Jeff Lee.
Okay. Do you accept the nomination? I don't know, do we have the option to reject?
Sure.
Yeah. Can't force them.
What is it? If nominated, I will not run. If elected, I will not serve.
Yeah. Okay, well, hmm, I think I'd prefer not to. Okay? See? All right?
I nominate Pat McKee.
Okay. Do you accept that nomination?
Sure.
All right. Are there other nominations from the floor? Okay. All right, hearing no additional nominations, I seek to close nominations.
Second.
And Teresa, thank you. At this time, please cast your ballots, pass those to me.
I wasn't prepared.
Come up with and accept a speech.
You have a speech ready, I want it for a fourth. All right. You... Yeah. And right. Yeah. And... Yeah. And... Thank you. Yeah. It's very hot.
Oh, yeah, it's always on payment.
Mr. McKee, congratulations.
Thank you. Such a long, hard fought campaign.
All right.
Thank you.
We got two, welcome. Did you want a speech?
I'll prepare one for next.
All right, awesome, looking forward to it. All right. Next is the office of treasurer, Lance Trollop has declared himself to be a candidate. Are there nominations from the floor? Seeing none? Okay. Seek to close nominations.
Some move.
Teresa?
Second.
And, sorry, the Jane?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So this time, would you please cast your ballots, pass those to me?
You move, you move.
Did it get everybody? All right, so...
Thank you.
It's harder than it looks, huh?
It is.
It was a close call.
Yeah. Congratulations, Lance.
Thank you.
You won. Yeah.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Lance, congratulations. And the next office is that of clerk, Jane Roche has declared herself a candidate for clerk. Are there any nominations from the floor? Seeing none, please cast your ballot and pass those to me.
Can we close nominations?
Motion to close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, thank you. Congratulations, Jane, thank you.
Yeah.
Last appointment is a board secretary and deputy clerk, and I would seek a motion to appoint Cassie Peck for that position.
Some move.
Second.
Jane, Teresa's a second. Any discussion?
Yay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations, thanks, Cassie.
Thank you.
Congratulations to everybody. Thank you very much for your service. At this time, I would be turning over the meeting to our board president, Tricia Zunker.
Okay.
Tricia, you want to take the central chair?
All right, should we move immediately?
It doesn't matter.
I don't know.
Whichever you prefer.
So we, maybe we can move after close session?
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you to all the past officers for your service. So at this point, we are on agenda item number three, appointing board committee membership. And I'm just going to go in the order that Cassie's provided.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so the first is audit of the bills committee. We have two interested, but Lance should be appointed as the chair in the treasurer role. Interested individuals are Lee Webster and James Boucher, who are both appointed to the audit of the bills committee. Is there a fourth person that would be interested in serving on this committee?
Yeah, we do need one more.
I'm all tied up in VP duties.
I'll go ahead and do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
People were staring at me.
Jeff Lee is also appointed to the audit of the bills committee, thank you. Okay, next, Wassa School Foundation. Oh, all right, here we... Next on the agenda, it's, it's in a different order than provided here.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so the fourth item on the agenda is appointing delegate, an alternative delegate to the 2020 delegate assembly, which is January 22nd through 24th, 2020. And we have two individuals interested in serving as delegate and nobody interested in serving as alternative delegate.
Chairman President, would it be appropriate for me to, I've, I've taken a look at the other positions and people who are interested, may I just share recommendations?
Sure, please.
So I understand, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move ahead to the CISA rep. Teresa said she's willing, as did Lee, I think.
And I, I would like to withdraw.
Oh.
At this point, I think Teresa's had significant involvement, is involved in some committees, and for that reason, I would think that it's important that she continue to serve.
Thank you, because it would be a little difficult, since I've been appointed, again, to be the boundary representative for boundary disputes with the DPI for the next two years. So I would have to resign that, and then they would have to find someone else for that position, and also, I represent Wassa on the at-large school district for CISA.
Okay.
So, thank you, Lee.
Okay, all right. Then, I apologize, I don't have, because I, I thought that was going to kind of put people in, in, in good position, so I'm sorry, yeah.
No, that's totally fine. So as far as the delegate, I'd like to appoint Lee Webster. Jane is serving in a clerk position, and I do think it's important to have as much representation where we can see it. So I'd like to appoint Lee in the role of the WASB delegate. Is there any interest in serving in the alternative delegate position? Currently, there's none listed here.
I am going to be at that delegate committee meeting anyway, because I am on a state resolution committee for one year. So if, we will both be in the room.
So are you willing to serve as alternative delegate?
No.
No, okay, so Jane's not willing.
I found it really boring, but I'm gonna be there anyway, because I intend to go, and so if, for some reason, Lee can't do that, I'll be there with Jane, but it is very boring, and I'd rather, I'd rather go to the sessions. Well, it really was, I'd rather go to the sessions, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry. Last year, the three of us were tied up in this delegate committee and couldn't go to session. Yeah, so I'll be glad to do it, just in case.
It's, it's more than just in case.
Okay.
I'm hearing you're the only potential interest. I will be appointing Teresa Miles of WASB, alternative delegate.
Thanks, Teresa.
Yeah, thank you, Teresa. Agenda item five, appoint board member to the Wassa School Foundation. Only one person has indicated interest, Teresa Miles. Is there any other interest? Hearing none. Teresa Miles is appointed to the, as the Wassa School Foundation representative. Agenda item number six, appoint board member representative to CISA nine annual convention. We've discussed this a little bit earlier, but the only individual now interested is Teresa Miles. Is there any other interest in serving in this position? Hearing none, Teresa Miles is appointed as the CISA nine representative. Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome.
At this point, all of the positions have been appointed. And I believe we need to make a motion to move to close session.
So move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
We gotta roll that one.
Oh, it's a roll call. That's right, I don't have it. Jeff Lee?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Tricia Zunker?
Yes.
He would be going.
All right, it's 6:42, I'd like to call the Education Operations Committee meeting of the Wassa Board of Education to order. During this meeting, board members will, in many cases, be hearing information presented to them for the first time. Their responses will... Uh, at this time, I would be turning over the meeting to our Board President Tricia Zuckers.
Okay.
Tricia, you want to take the central chair?
All right, should we move immediately?
It doesn't matter.
I don't know.
Whichever you prefer.
So we, maybe we can move after closed session?
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you to all the past officers, um, for your service. So at this point, we are on Agenda Item Number Three, Appointing Board Committee Membership. And I'm just going to go in the order that Cassie's provided.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so the first is Audit of the Bills Committee. We have two interested, but, um, Lance should be appointed as the Chair in the Treasurer role. Interested individuals are Lee Webster and James Boucher, who are both appointed to the Audit of the Bills Committee. Is there a fourth person that would be interested in serving on this committee?
Yeah, we do need one more.
I'm all tied up in VP duties.
I'll go ahead and do it.
Thank you, Jeff.
People were staring at me.
Jeff Lee also appointed to the Audit of the Bills Committee, thank you. Okay, next Wassa School Foundation. Oh, all right, here we. Next on the agenda, it's, it's, um, in a different order than provided here.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so, um, the fourth item on the agenda is appointing delegate, an alternative delegate to the 2020 Delegate Assembly, which is January 22nd through 24th, 2020. And we have two individuals interested in serving as delegate, and nobody interested in serving as alternative delegate.
Chairman President, would it be appropriate for me to, I've, I've taken a look at the other, um, positions and people who are interested. May I just share recommendations? So, um, I understand, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move ahead to the, to the CISA rep. Um, Teresa said she's willing, as did Lee, I think.
And I, I would like to withdraw.
Oh.
At this point, I think Teresa's had significant involvement, is involved in some committees. And for that reason, I would think that it's important that she continue to serve.
Thank you, because it would be a little difficult since I've been appointed again to be the Boundary Representative for Boundary Disputes with the DPI for the next two years. So, um, I would have to resign that, and then they would have to find someone else for that position. And also, I represent, um, Wassa on the At Large School District for CISA.
Okay.
So, thank you, Lee.
Okay, all right. Then, I apologize, I don't have, because I, I thought that was going to kind of, uh, put people in, in, in good positions, so I'm sorry. Yeah.
No, that's totally fine. So, as far as the delegate, um, I'd like to appoint Lee Webster. Um, Jane is serving in a clerk position, and I do think it's important to have as much representation where we can see it. So I'd like to appoint Lee in the role of the WASB delegate. Is there any interest in serving in the alternative delegate position? Currently, there's none listed here.
I am going to be at that Delegate Committee meeting anyway, because I am on a state, Resolution Committee for one year. So if, we will both be in the room.
So, are you willing to serve as alternative delegate?
No.
No, okay, so Jane's not willing.
I found it really boring, but, um, I'm gonna be there, um, anyway, because I intend to go. And so if for some reason, Lee can't do that, I'll be there with Jane, but, um, it is very boring, and I'd rather, I'd rather go to the sessions. Well, it really was, I'd rather go to the sessions, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry.
Last year, the three of us were tied up in this Delegate Committee, and couldn't go to session.
Yeah, so I'll be glad to do it just in case.
It's, it's more than just in case.
Okay.
I'm hearing you're the only potential interest. I will be appointing Teresa Miles as WASB Alternative Delegate.
Thanks Teresa.
Yeah, thank you Teresa. Agenda Item Five, Appoint Board Member to the Wassa School Foundation. Only one person has indicated interest, Teresa Miles, is there any other interest? Hearing none, Teresa Miles is appointed as the, as the Wassa School Foundation Representative. Um, Agenda Item Number Six, Appoint Board Member Representative to CISA Annual Convention. Uh, we've discussed this a little bit earlier, but the only individual now interested is Teresa Miles. Is there any other interest in serving in this position? Hearing none, Teresa Miles is appointed as the CISA Annual Representative, thank you Teresa.
You're welcome.
At this point, all of the positions have been appointed. And I believe we need to make a motion to move to closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
We gotta roll that one.
Oh, it's a roll call, that's right. Jeff Lee.
Yes.
Beth Martin. Pat McKee.
Yes.
Teresa Miles.
Yes.
Jane Roos.
Yes.
Jim Boucher.
Yes.
Lance Trollope.
Yes.
Lee Webster.
Yes.
Tricia Zuckers.
Yes.
All right, at 6:42, I'd like to call the, um, Education Operations Committee Meeting of the Wassa Board of Education to order. During this meeting, Board Members will, in many cases, be hearing information presented to them for the first time. Their responses will, in many cases, be extemporaneous, and should not be considered either their final opinion on the matter, nor should any opinion expressed by an individual Board Member during any meeting be considered the opinion of the Board as a whole, unless it is presented by the Presiding Officer as such. So the first order of business is to approve the meeting minutes from March 18th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, the meeting minutes of March 18th, 2019 are approved. Next on the agenda, we have the Legal Expense Summary for Third Quarter, and Bob Test will be presenting that.
Sure, it's a written report, we see quarterly. And each quarter, we will see by category and by legal firm. And the top one is just the quarter, and the bottom one is three quarters to date. So three quarters to date, uh, $33,000. That's probably a little bit lower than what we're accustomed to. Annual budget is $90,000 for, in my neighborhood. Not a lot of construction projects going on, not a lot of big RFPs, like last year with the transportation ones, and things that are working in our favor. And no action on that one.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Bob? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the next Agenda Item. All right, so Agenda Item Four is a Resolution Authorizing the Transfer of Funds, the Establishment of an Espro Account with Respect to and the Defeasance of Certain, uh, the General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2010 dated December 3rd, 2010, and General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2011 dated November 15th, 2011.
Sure, you're gonna see some things in Board Book today that just may not sound like my voice when you're reading through them. Created by Bond Council, and Bond, Bond Council will keep us legally compliant with the plan that we start out, started out, uh, talking about last October. We were very forthright and transparent about defeating debt, and defeating is essentially prepaying future callable referendum debt, if we have an affordability opportunity. And we have that, we have had for two years. So we're defeating about $7 million worth of debt. So we're paying $7 million worth of callable debt. All along, our mill rate did go down from $11.12 down to $11 while doing that. And we're saving about $580,000 in interest payments by doing that. It's not $580,000 that's freed up for anything else we want, it's in the referendum mill rate levy. But it is $580,000 that we don't have to ask the public to support. So $580,000, that's real, real dollars. And this is the second year we, we've done that, I believe last year was 380, somewhere in there. And I have showed you already once, and it might even deserve another look. Here's a visual for what defeasance has done for us. If we want to go backwards, this is our original debt structure. So when we issue the debt, we develop a combination of callable debt and non-callable debt. And callable debt, uh, you can prepay, but you don't get quite as favorable of a rate. So we issue a combination of callable debt and non-callable debt, and this is our debt structure. And we've talked for quite a while about 2023 being that opportunity. And when debt falls off, you've got an opportunity to tackle more debt if you happen to have needs. And we do have needs, we're still working on exactly what they are, but we do have needs. And the Board asked me to think about perhaps moving that natural cliff up if there were an opportunity. And that defeasance opportunity fit that bill almost perfectly. So the very next year, we did this. And if you really were to look closer, maybe on your iPad, there's blue hashed, and then there's blue solid. And the blue hashed was what was debt that was placed in the year 2018. That was two years ago. This year, we're using a similar strategy, if you look at the purple. The purple hash marks, we got rid of in favor of the purple defeasance. So think about what our debt structure looks like now. Our debt payments are going up considerably. But keep in mind, this is only Fund 39 referendum debt. It's actually a pretty small portion compared to our Fund 10 general levy. So if we take our Fund 10 general levy and include our Fund 39 debt retirement levy, our mill rate's still going down. And what's it gonna do next year? Next year, it's gonna go down even further. Next year, it's gonna go from this to what is now the green, because these are gone. Because those were callable debt, so it goes from here to here. So in perhaps August, maybe even in July, when it becomes obvious we're not going to referendum prior to next November, it's already getting pretty obvious, and perhaps we're not going to referendum before next November, we'll take another opportunity, we'll have to find another color, and we'll take some of this green callable debt, and we'll stack it up here. And we'll still allow our mill rate overall to go down. We'll find something that's palatable, it'll be less than $11. And we let it go down another $12, tackle some more callable debt, and represent another, or create another opportunity to pass a referendum. At that point, you go to referendum, if you pass, you fill in with a mill rate that's acceptable. Uh, if you fail a referendum, you call more debt perhaps, but eventually, you're gonna run out of callable debt. And there are districts in Wisconsin that don't have any referendum debt. And they find themselves in a really difficult situation to pass a referendum. Because people have gotten used to that, and that's what they're entitled to in their mind, and, uh, but buildings take a lot of money to keep up, so. Uh, we're talking about it early enough, and this strategy has been going on for a couple of years already, so we're in a really nice position to be able to manage our debt. We can almost pick our mill rate for next year within reason. Because we'll call enough debt to hit our target. We picked our mill rate this year, we picked $11. That's what we wanted our mill rate to do, and we hit it right in the nose. So, we're gonna be in a similar situation next year. Now, the two motions you see on the agenda tonight, this strategy wasn't created by Bond Council, but Bond Council needs to get involved, because they need a lot of formalized documents, legally compliant documents. So you will see two motions that you have to take initial action on tonight. The numbers still aren't final. They will become final in two weeks when the full Board acts on the same two items. And at that point, we'll need a roll call vote, and we'll maybe have a few more precise numbers. But the big one is the $580,000 of interest savings. This picture won't change markedly, might change a little, in fact, I'm not gonna create a new picture, it just changes minimally. I'll create a new set of documents, I go into Board Book, they'll have the President's name instead of the President, right? I think the Clerk perhaps has to sign some documents, and we'll have it all in place for the next morning. So that's my presentation for both of those Agenda Items, four and five.
Okay, thanks Bob.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions for Bob? Okay, then I'll be seeking a motion to authorize the establishment of an Espro account for the purpose of defeasance of certain general obligation bonds as, bonds as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, then moving on to Agenda Item Five, as Bob has already presented on that, seeking a motion to authorize the redemption of outstanding bonds as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. All right, Bob, we're on to, uh,
Sure.
Budget reconciliation for 2019-2020 year.
Reconciliation. I promised, I think, two months ago, and then again, perhaps last month, kept warning this was coming, and eventually, we were gonna take action on this. And you will see a document that I'm hoping looks pretty familiar. This is a document that a lot of the narrative stayed the same, some numbers have changed a little bit. If we, we start from the top, we had to balance 325,000, that's what our model suggested with the assumptions that we were making. And this is a big assumption that we're all worried about, we talk about this one a lot, salary and, uh, salary for all employee groups. And the assumption that we built in was 2% only because it's a nice, easy place to start. It doesn't say we're gonna settle on 2%, it doesn't mean it's gonna be higher or lower. It's just an assumption that we start out building the model with. Uh, we made some changes in many places on the reconciliation plan, maybe you ram both off and looked at them side by side to see where the changes were. But we made some changes that freed up money in the budget to increase that from a 2% to a 2.48%. And if you're thinking 2 to 2.48, maybe your mind is already going, oh, you must have increased the categorical aid funding for special ed, we didn't. The categorical aid still stayed at 30%, excuse me, at 27.5%. We haven't leveraged the 30 yet, even though that's in the current version of the budget, and we still were allowed to go up to 2.48. Okay? And some things that changed, the rest of this document stays pretty much the same. Because it's pretty significant, I'm gonna call your attention again to the elementary math curriculum. The elementary math curriculum item was $600,000. We did a combination of funding some of it from this year. We're not gonna take shipment on all of them for this year, so later on this summer, you're gonna see an unbalanced budget for next year, that's the only way we can carry money from this year into next year. We're also accessing a little bit of fund balance, and we're also accessing Education Department funding going forward forever, uh, to fund similar requests in the future. You might recall the Wassa East Board Meeting, or the Wassa East Education Operations Committee Meeting, was when the Math Curriculum Committee presented, and the Board said, wow, this is gonna happen again in three years. It's gonna happen again in four or five years. This also, uh, highlights a strategy for when that does happen, in three years, or four years, or five years, for significant curriculum-only expenses, three, four, $500,000 expenses. Revenue limit is assumed to go up $200 per. Categorical aid is still at the 27.5, we're hopeful that it's gonna be 30. We have some ideas, uh, most notably salary for all employee groups, it goes to 30, but it's still at 27 on this document. The bold you will see as differences from the previous document we saw. The 268, 282 is 271, a pretty insignificant change there. Uh, but it's a half of a physical therapist and another half of a special ed teacher. So instead of one and a half and one, it's half and two, so that changed a little bit. The Mental Health and SEL Initiative, uh, that was what was previously funded with our Habits Grant. And I wish I could say more about that, Angie isn't here tonight. Uh, but that went down a little bit, 273 went to 256. Excuse me, it went up, 256 went to 273, but we had some redundancy in peer expansion costs. That number was bigger, that was 232. That one went down because we realized some redundancy in the two. If we take the two of them together, it was 489, it went down to 477. So those two together went down by about $20,000. Pretty small amount considering how big it was in the first place, $489,000. So there was a, an exchange, so the peer expansion is a little bit smaller. Uh, another one that's bold, uh, corresponding staffing reductions. The staffing reductions, uh, in the previous, uh, iteration of this document were negative 11.7 for 549,000. Under the current, it's a negative, excuse me, it was 9.2, it's down 11.7. So there were staffing reductions of 9.2, now we have staffing reductions of 11.7. But I think it's important to point out, and I do it in my narrative, that overall, the staffing level has increased by .6. The old version, the staffing was increased by 2.5, and I think I even said in the narrative that we're trying to achieve something that's a little closer to flat, especially considering our enrollment is declining. We didn't quite get there, it's an increased staffing of .6. And what's more important is there is an exchange of staffing to focus more on social emotional learning. So with the Habits Grant and the peer expansion, more staffing towards social emotional learning. And the combination of all the different staffing adds and deducts. And then, of course, well, next to the bottom one, not so much of course, but adjusted the number of retirees. I think our original number was perhaps 19 retirees, and then it went to 20. I think the number we're at right now is 21, so I added one more retiree, and that's the retiree of teachers alone. And then this one, which we didn't see before, the combination of all of these things freed up another $266,000. That represents almost half of a percent salary increase for all employee groups. So now, instead of at the 2.0 that was in the original assumption, it's at 2.48.
So Bob, that, that must be a typo then, it just says .4 right there?
It increased, because remember, this starts with the assumption of 2.
Oh, okay.
And then this is an increase by 4.8, so the new number is 2.48.
Thank you.
I'm glad you asked that question, because heaven forbid, we go, well, we're too thinking.
Yeah.
So, at 2.48, and if, I did a little bit of number crunching, and if the 2.4, or 27.5 special ed categorical aid reimbursement turns to 30, like is in the budget right now, that number would go up to probably 3, even, 3% salary. And I think, uh, we've already suggested to you, and got a couple of head nods, and we feel pretty strongly that we're pretty good, the other place is in the one spot we really would like to add budget would be in salary for everyone. Uh, especially after a few pretty lean years, uh, if we could change that 2.48 to a 3, uh, we can maybe catch up to some of our neighbors. And, and that in its entirety is what we use to build the budget, which you see in May. And then you'll see the Budget booklet probably about a month prior to the annual meeting, because we like to have you review it first, and we need you to take action on what goes in the newspaper, announcing the annual meeting. And then we'll talk about it at the annual meeting with the electorate in the room. And then we'll talk about it again when the state comes out with the final numbers for equalization aid, and number of students and all of that, and then we'll set levy again after that. So you'll have plenty of chances to vote on this, this is the first of which.
Don't spin the 432 before that.
Right.
Any questions for Bob?
I always have my yearly plea that we get all of our employees up to the $15 living wage. I know there's concern that we can't afford it, but I, I think we have to find a way to make it happen.
Okay, then I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full Board the 2019-2020 Budget Reconciliation Plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained, yep.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, Agenda Item Seven, Designation of Bank Signatory. Is this also you, Bob?
Me too. This is Bob's me. We bank with several banks, and sometimes they don't need Board action for me to conduct business. Some banks do, we just encountered a bank that insisted on seeing Board action. And maybe in the past, it was the Board President's signature, but they want the minutes, they want the Board action saying exactly what the document that you're looking at says. I did not make it available to the entire public, because they don't need to be able to copy it, so to speak. In the narrative, it explains that we would be asking for myself, Noel Torrance, and Janet Toose, and their positions specifically, to be able to conduct business consistent with Board policy. And the name of the bank isn't in there, but what you would be passing tonight would be me being able to put a specific name of a bank on that document, present it to the President, and I believe the Clerk is the other name on there, with their names specifically on it, and we could present it to that bank.
Bob, just a curiosity question, what drives the strategy of using multiple banks?
Uh, at Central Office, we don't use a lot of multiple banks, other than our deposits, because we do put on RFP to seek return.
Sure.
Regularly. But like a checking account, at Central Office, we keep our same bank for an extended amount of time before something changes that makes us, let's say, unhappy with the bank. But at the sites, there are a lot of relationship issues, where one school might be comfortable with one bank, and another elementary school might be comfortable with another bank. There are some, uh, efficiencies or some savings we could capture by all being on the same bank, but they're minimal. It's mostly relationship-driven at the sites.
Okay. I mean, to me, it just seems like it would make sense, right, you have more buying power when you can You have more buying power when you consolidate. And is the value to that greater than, I don't know what value the relationship brings from an elementary school to a?
We do look at it regularly, and the elementaries have an incentive to be with the same bank that we have at Central Office, let's put it that way. And we allow that decision to be local. And sometimes the elementary school will say, yes, that's a good enough reason to go with our bank. And sometimes they'll say, no, they're treating us pretty well, and they're not charging us any fees, and it's a small dollar amount. Maybe they've got a small town bank that just, maybe they take a loss on that account even. But I don't know, each individual school can make that decision.
All right, thanks.
All right, any other questions for Bob? All right, then I'm seeking a motion to authorize District Business Department Personnel, including the Chief Finance and Business Services Officer, to be signatory on behalf of the Wassa School District to execute banking business in accordance with all district policies.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. All right, then I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's adjourned.